We, the Bangla people, welcome you to our country. We are the lawful inhabitants of this peninsula for thousands of generations. We are part of this land on which we stand, part of the waters that flow in and around. We are part of the dreaming stories that are connected. The full awareness of oneness with the land and waters will ensure a future for the children of tomorrow. Ngariña, Wunaguru Bangala Mirinye, Yuradamelbu. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, again, welcome. With our traditional oath to Waila, we, the Waila City Council members, commit to serving the community of which we are a part and will work together diligently and collaboratively to create a prosperous future in which we can all share. Item three, our arbitrary notices, I do ask those that wish to stand to stand. And we remember past residents. Desmond Westlake, Stan Herbert, Robert Patterson, Eileen Flanagan, Patricia Hammond, Peter Oliver and Robert Bowles. And I ask you for a moment, silence, please. Thank you. Item four, our attendance record, we have one apology, councillor Todd, we have no leave of absence. Item five, council member and executive declarations, 5.1, any conflicts of interest to declare? CEO.
Through the mayor, I confirm that I've got a material interest in items 14.2.4, which is the 2024 review of minimum and maximum remuneration for local government CEO, chief executive officers, and also item 20.1.1, which is in relation to the CEO performance review. And I'll leave the meeting when both those matters have been discussed.
Thank you, CEO. Any other conflicts of interest? Thank you. Item 5.3, two gifts and benefits, any gifts and benefits or benefits to declare? Thank you. Item six, minutes of the previous meeting, 6.1, confirmation of the minutes of the previous audory council meeting held on Monday 19th of February. We have the minutes there. Councillor Westerman, you're moving.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pons seconded.
Yes.
I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry, thank you. Item 6.2, confirmation of the minutes of the previous audory council meeting held on Monday 26th of February. Would somebody care to move councillor Border, seconded councillor Inglis? I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry, thank you. Item seven, matters adjourned or laid on the table, 7.1, Air Peninsula Local Government Association Notice of Motion from District Council of Elliston to deal with Great White Sharks. You will see that that is a matter further in the agenda. Item eight, deputations, we have none. Item nine, petitions, we have none. Item 10, public question time, I understand we have nil questions, thank you. Item 12, presentations, we have none. Item 13, committee reports, we have none. Now, before we go on to item 14, I seek leave of the meeting to bring forward a confidential item. Under city growth, item 20.3.1, yes. So I would seek, and it is confidential, we will have to go into confidential. We do have somebody online waiting to address us. So would somebody care to move that we bring that forward as an item of confidential? Go into confidential. Move councillor Deputy Mayor Pons, seconded councillor Inglis, I'll put the motion. Those in favour, that's to bring it forward. Sorry? I now need another motion to go into confidence.
Yes.
Yes. So would somebody care to move that we now go into confidence? Councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Inglis. We will be back, though. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry, thank you. Right, just going back to item 11, council member activities. Now they're being scrolled, if anybody would like to add to their list or anything fresh, give you the opportunity. Right, councillor Border.
I would just like to add that I went to the consultation with the community for the GFG Claude and Treat Reserve today, this afternoon, which was very positive, good vibe, very casual setting. Well received by the community.
Thank you councillor, certainly some lengthy list there. Yeah. Deputy Mayor Pons.
I just have a comment, one of the duties that I was lucky enough to do was visit Fitz Street School, year three, four class. I think it's very good for our mental health and our self-esteem, so I think we should all do a visit like that. As I was leaving, we got, "We love you Deputy Mayor", we all need that. I would like to do one a month, please.
Would you care to do mine, Deputy Mayor?
Anytime.
A comfort zone that I'm trying to assimilate to. Right, thank you everyone for what you are doing. Moving on to item 14. Reports, council offices, 14.1, office of the chief executive, 14.1.1, CEO's action report. You have it in front of you there, we'll take it as read, any questions? You can refer to CEO, CEO, or comments from the CEO.
Yeah, I'll just make one quick comment, but I see there's a question. Just, I was going to verbally provide an update that I've got a meeting tomorrow together with Cathy Jarrett, Director of Corporate Services with Qantas in relation to their current flights, both in terms of frequency and the costs thereof. One of the key items or outcomes we expect from that discussion tomorrow is to formally request Qantas to come and do a presentation to council on the subject, because I know many of you have been receiving questions or comments from people within the community about the cost of flights. So just wanted to let you know that that is in train. I also have a meeting, it was raised at one of the most recent meetings with Saipole also tomorrow regarding the congregation of people close to the boundary of our current alcohol-free zone. So I'll be discussing that matter with the Saipole tomorrow as well, so just a couple of quick updates, thank you.
Thank you, CEO. Councillor Border.
Just in regards to the solar scheme, the comments referred to the RDA. So just wondering whether we can have an update from the RDA Economic Manager of what action has been taken to progress the concept? And is there a timeframe within which we can have a clear direction for an outcome? And then if not, can we suggest a reasonable timeframe? Just so that doesn't keep drifting on, as I imagine it could do. So just can we be proactive about it to say what some critical dates are that are reasonable?
Thank you councillor, CEO.
If I may respond in part, I'll just get our manager of finance to provide an update regarding an application we've put in in relation to solar schemes.
Oh, I was just going to give an update on my conversations with Richard from the RDA. So I did send a follow-up email, I had had a conversation with him. So he's done a bit of initial research on some options that are already out there floating around. So he was going to send that through to me, but I haven't seen it yet, so I've just followed that up this week. Yeah, then we can take next steps, whether they see themselves as the lead on that project, I don't know. But I'll, once I have that information, look, send it through. So I'm hoping to have that in the next week or two.
I had a second question as well. Just in regards to shopping trolleys. It's just, a number of times a community member has mentioned it to me and also I see a little bit on social media about it as well. I feel like it's causing, this is with shopping trolleys being left around the community. I think it's causing issues for the pride in our community, among many other things. And I think the supermarkets need to make it more of a priority. So I just wonder if we can take a slightly heavier approach to what we have? And is there any possibility of impounding the trolleys? Or charging a fine for their release, or just charging a fine for impounding them? I don't know what our options are, but can we do more to actively motivate and compel them for them to do more?
Just following up on that councillor, I have had a discussion earlier today with the CEO about that very matter. And it was on the agenda. I've discussed with him whether we should be writing at least two supermarkets we know that may, I don't want to say worse offender, but certainly in my view, somebody that travels down His Avenue and side streets regularly, I would say His Avenue and side streets are the home of rogue trolleys, even front yards. My feeling from the response of the supermarkets is that the community lets them know, well, the community first of all doesn't know how to let them know. I get the feeling that's what they're responding to. I believe we should be trying to push them to actually get out and patrol those streets, particularly in that area. There's been photos up on Facebook of rogue trolleys up on McBride Terrace. And I would suspect they all come from the one area. So yes, I'd like to see us write in the first instance and get a commitment from them that they will get out and not just rely on the community. If they want to rely on the community, they should be doing their own marketing, advertising and advising the community how they can report them. But you've got a good point there, councillor.
If I could ask Director of Corporate Services also to provide an update on that subject?
Thank you, and through the mayor. I met with Coles and Woolworths, representatives from Coles and Woolworths in relation to this matter. And they do do a weekly pickup around the city. Clearly it's not enough, and so therefore we will certainly meet with them again and write to them. But I do just want to draw to council's attention, there have been some very recent changes to the local nuisance bill, to the local nuisance act. And that local nuisance act has now brought shopping trolleys under its auspices. So I'll have a look at that provision or the provisions in relation to that in detail to see whether or not there is any form of expiations or regulatory activity that can be able to taken around shopping trolleys. So the introduction of shopping trolleys into that act is a good thing. It wasn't there previously, and so I'll have a look at what are some of the strategies that we can deploy around that.
Thank you councillor Knox.
I was just wondering whether we could do a bylaw up and require them to have deposits the same as already do. That's the way to fix it.
If I can also respond to that, shopping trolleys has been a topic of considerable discussion across local government for many, 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 many years. I can recall previous attempts to introduce shopping trolleys and provisions around shopping trolleys into bylaws has not been successful by other councils. I was at Marion Council when we tried to do that, and it was rejected by the legislature. So I suspect a bylaw is not the option here. But we do have, let me investigate what the provisions are in the local nuisance act so that we can see whether or not there is anything that, other actions that we can do in relation to that. And I'll bring a report back to council in that regard.
Thank you councillor Inglis.
All roads with trolleys lead to Story Street and Jacob Street. It's 15 there the other day, and to the credit, they come and pick them up, they're going on a regular basis. You see them on Mondays, all weirdos, they come from everywhere. They'll flock in, cash your bottles of cans in, all over the trolleys. And Coles and Woolies are out, whoever the contractor are there on a regular basis. But all roads are by the trolleys that lead to that bottle and canter, but.
Councillor Simpson. I noticed you had a meeting with Trappat Talib, how did that go?
Thank you councillor Simpson for the question. Look, I think it was a good meeting. It's one of many conversations that we need to have with different community groups in terms of their facilities. I think it was fair to say that they're keen to continue to utilise that facility and they're keen to try and reactivate those club rooms. We've presented some questions to them, which we've asked them to take away and to reflect on. And I've got a follow-up meeting Thursday of next week to revisit the subject. Like many of our community groups, as you're all familiar, everyone's got their own club rooms or their own space. And they struggle like every other community group. So we talked a lot about the need for shared services, shared facilities and multi-user facilities. And, you know, they understood the information that I was presenting to them and the questions. But yeah, another conversation or two and hopefully we'll come to some conclusion on that conversation.
Thank you, CEO. Any further questions of the CEO? Otherwise I'll put the recommendation. We have a recommendation there. Do note the CEO's action report, move councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Border. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry, thank you. Item 14.2.1, the monthly budget report for February 2024. CEO, do you wish to make comment or any questions? The CEO, who probably then pass them on to manager of finances. Yes councillor Knox.
I've got one question, in the, on page 82 of the monthly report, it talks about repayment of principal and repayment of principal, nil. I thought we were going to use the process from the White Tech building to reduce that, so I thought it would have appeared there.
Yeah, thank you, through the chair, that happened on 30th of June last year. So that's back at last year's financials.
Councillor Simpson.
Page 87, you mentioned the fact we're in the red a bit, 93,000, I was trying to get. With 93,000 dollars in the red to do the airport with the. Security check, yes. I don't know how I can be behind, where it's a fully funded, I still don't understand that. It hasn't been fully funded by the government, yet we're 93,000 red.
Through the mayor, so this is just showing the cost of the service. And that one's actually under, I did at the moment, so because of some contractual renegotiations we managed to do, the 93,000 is actually a saving from where we were at at the start of the year, expected to be at. But it has no net effect on our financials, because then we've just got 93,000 less that we could claim. Noting that it's not, from mid-November, it's no longer funded by the government. That's when the grant funding ran out, now it's funded by us, I'm charging that to Qantas. But, so you're right, there's no net impact on council's finances. But we have brought the cost of that service down by renegotiating with the contractor. And so then that is less cost that we're passing on to passengers. That makes sense?
Thank you. Any further, so. There are no further questions, we have a recommendation, would somebody care to move? Move councillor Border, seconded councillor Campbell, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry, thank you. Item 14.2.2, strategic management plans consultation. They have quite a document there. Take it as read, CEO, do you wish to make any comment at this stage?
Only comment, I just want to highlight, which you would have, I'm sure, picked up from the reports, is that we have amended the strategic plan to take on board the feedback that we've received through our audit and risk committee and also from Escoza. So we've now been referring to a two-speed future. So the strategic plan has been amended to reflect that two-stage process. And we've got now strong alignment between the strategic plan and also our long-term financial plan and asset management plan, which was one of the matters that the audit committee, audit and risk committee pulled out, that the previous strategic plan was probably a little bit too high level and hard to tie down with our finances, given the situation we're in at present. Being a potentially unsustainable council.
Thank you, CEO. Councillor Border.
And I just reiterate, as I've mentioned before, about the messaging to the community. So when this is released, so council releases the draft strategic management plan for public consultation. What you just said then, I appreciate hearing that, and I think the community would as well, that we've taken on board the Escoza advice, we've got an audit and risk committee, so it's like a double and a triple check, and also, okay, well, how come we got it wrong in the first place? What you just said about we would, you know, aiming a bit too high, whatever it might have been. But that we've taken that information on, I think that's a really important part to message to the community, to just bring them on the journey with us, they can't all be sitting here every week or every month. But so obviously we know that we've gone through over and over again the strategic plan and the long-term financial plan. So something to the effect that brings people into the picture, as you've just described there, I think would be a good addition.
Thank you councillor, any other questions or comments to the CEO? In that case, we have a recommendation. The council released the draft strategic management plans for public consultation in accordance with council's public consultation policy. Move councillor Knox, seconded councillor Border, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry, thank you. 14.2.3, Waila City Council response to the Escoza advice.
Through the mayor, we have discussed this again, both with the audit and risk committee and through a council workshop previously. This provides our preliminary response to the Escoza recommendations, noting that some of the Escoza recommendations were not new to us. So whilst we provided some preliminary comments through social media in relation to this particular matter, this report obviously provides a bit more substance. And happy to respond to any questions that councillors may have in relation to those preliminary responses.
Any questions to the CEO? Councillor Knox.
I was just wondering whether, I was just wondering whether we thought the $40,000 charge was a bit excessive and for what we actually got provided.
I'll respond by saying that I think the local government sector at large has constantly questioned the value of the Escoza reviews. Escoza some time ago determines the basis upon which it was going to share its cost across councils. And it's all relative, because there's smaller councils with smaller budgets than us that are paying the same amount. In some regards, you can say a lot of what was in this Escoza report, we already knew, so was there much value? I think if nothing else, it helped to sharpen some of our focus and some of our discussions around some of the challenges that we have as a city. And certainly things like our building assets and the amounts of public value that has been derived from some of those public buildings. I think it was good to have some independent commentary on that. Cathy, or Director of Corporate Services, did you want to say something or add to that last comment?
Just in relation to this report, I think that certainly the Escoza report and the commentary from the audit and risk committee has been very, very useful for this council in terms of really placing a focus on the areas that it needs to be focused on, which is a good thing. And one of the other things that I'd just like to highlight in this report, the audit and risk committee had and was saying for quite some time in their commentary in relation to two areas of focus, one being on cost constraint and the other area of focus being on increasing the revenue coming in to council via means other than the existing rate payers. And this report actually points out the areas of cost constraint and what it is that we're doing and how council has actually moved towards cost constraint and repair to its budget and long-term financial plan. But it also highlights for the first time where the potential avenues of additional revenue were going to come from in the short to medium term. And it's, you know, this is the first report where those additional revenues have actually been highlighted. So it actually shows the whole of the picture. So this report is an important report in the context of information provision out into the community. And it's that both sides of the ledger that actually need to be communicated out into the community in terms of the repair of council's financial position over the short to medium and the longer term.
Thank you director. Any further questions or comments to the CEO? Yeah, coach, we have a recommend.
Yep, sorry. Sorry, more just a comment, but I think it draws out the worst case for the community. And they've seen what they think they haven't seen before. But it really puts that on the stage and that we are in a position to do something about it. The words, the two, the two speed, I think is quite a good analogy of where we're at. And I think the more that that is put to the community of what we're dealing with now, but also planning for the future, and kind of the dilemma that that puts us in with limited funding, opportunity and longer-term issues. Any more, more of a stage for that to be widely dispersed, I think is a good thing. So just to add that bit of commentary on as well, and I'm happy to move it as well.
Councillor Knox, is yours a comment?
I was moving it.
Oh, right.
I'll second it.
Move councillor Knox, seconded councillor Border, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry, thank you. Item 14.2.4. Yes, CEO.
Just confirming my conflict of interest and I'll leave the meeting at this point in time.
Thank you, CEO. The 2024 review of minimum and maximum remuneration for local government chief executive officers. Director Corporate.
Thank you through the mayor, I will take the report as read. This submission to the remuneration tribunal largely follows council's previous submission to the remuneration tribunal back in, back in 2022, prior to the introduction of the remuneration tribunal, setting the bans for chief executives across all of local government. And I just want to go back a step, certainly for the remuneration tribunal to be setting the chief executive officer salaries and bans across local government is a critical piece of governance, and it was one of the reforms that have been brought in as part of the recent local government reforms. And local government and the remuneration tribunal now need to actually work out what is the best model in terms of setting of those bands. They passed their determination for the current bandings last year, I think it was. And that, those bandings and that determination clearly need some review. And the remuneration tribunal highlighted at the time that they made their first determination that these bandings and the, and the remuneration needed further review. So this process now is they're going out to consultation on, on the various criteria that could be used as part of the review, but also secondly, as to how to go about doing the review with three options, first option being that it be done over a long period of time with the remuneration tribunal seeking feedback from individual councils. Or secondly, getting a consultant in to actually do that review. Or secondly, getting a consultant in to actually do that review, do the body of work and then bring in a new banding. So this submission is before council, setting out some commentary against the criteria. It's very similar to the original submission that we made in March 2022. And this submission proposes that the remuneration tribunal take the approach of getting a consultant to do that review. But using the same consultant that was used to undertake the review of the Western Australian CEO remuneration in local government and seeking to leverage from the knowledge that that consultant has in terms of that review. I'm happy to take questions.
We have any questions to director corporate? Councillor Knox.
I was hoping somebody else might have had some questions. Forgive me if I'm wrong in this. I'm getting old. But it looks to me like a 20 to 25% increase in salary. Hundred thousand dollars equals 1% of rates. So we're looking at about a half a percent increase in rates to fund this. I note that not included are professional memberships and professional development costs. These are extras. And I can't understand our submission that we made on page 286, where we talk about the regional allowance paid to CEOs for large numbers of non-business travel, which increases the further we are from Adelaide and refers to the cost of attending childcare and health services often requiring travel to Adelaide. Well, most people in this room have to travel to Adelaide for health purposes from time to time. I know I do it very frequently. But if that could be explained to me, I might get a better understanding of it.
Thank you councillor.
Yes, thank you through the mayor and thank you for the question councillor Knox. What that reference is about is, is yes, recognizing that everybody in this room pays those additional costs or travels those additional miles in terms of setting services, as do people living in regions, it's part of living in regions. What this is actually saying though, is that as part of an attraction retention perspective in terms of actually getting the skills of the people into the complexity of the role of a chief executive officer. And so the proposition is, is that paying an allowance for those additional, the additional travel and the additional costs incurred is an attractor to attract people to the roles, the complex roles of chief executive officers in region. It's not about suggesting that others don't actually have those costs, it's there as an attractor and a retention.
I certainly didn't get a sense of that from reading the submission.
I'm happy to update it so that, to ensure that it's actually grounded in this is about attraction retention, as opposed to suggesting that people living in region don't actually have those costs as well.
But I would have thought a salary of between 319,000 odd and 351,500 would be attraction enough.
Thank you councillor, yes. Councillor border.
Does this, I haven't read every single word. Does it restrict negotiation on an individual basis?
No, it doesn't. The, the local government reforms which recent, which came in in the last couple of years has taken out of the hands of councils, the setting of chief executive officer remuneration and put it into the hands of the remuneration tribunal. And what the remuneration tribunal is doing is setting bands within which the remuneration can be set. And so it's within those bands that the individual negotiations can occur between the council and the, and the chief executive officer or the prospective chief executive officer in that role. What the council submission is also suggesting in terms of it's a, it's a two-tiered thing. So the setting of bands for the remuneration of chief executive officers across the different categories of councils, so categories one through five, and to set those categories the same as the categories as set for council members. Then what it is suggesting is that for regional councils, that again, a band or, you know, an allowance be actually provided and that that allowance be set by the remuneration tribunal in a band, but then could be individually negotiated within that band by the councils and the individual chief executive officer.
Can I continue my messaging component in that, so this is out of the council's hands. So the nine of us cannot decide on, without, outside of that band of the, what the CEO's role falls under for Waila. We have no control whether it's above or below that, but within that band, we can slide the scale along a little bit. I think it's vitally important that the community are aware of that because I think we could all anticipate what's going to happen when it becomes publicised, that, oh my goodness, they're giving the CEO a pay rise and we're paying more rates for that, as councillor Knox has said. So I think it's really important that the community, as with the shift from site value to capital value, this is out of the council's hands. And on that note, I think with the individual negotiations, something around especially for Waila is living arrangements and location of living arrangements specific to the CEO of the Waila position. I think that may, you know, maybe it warrants further discussion as well. But that that is somewhere included, that that can be part of our negotiation. So two, two key points, they have the messaging to the community and the geographical location of the CEO.
Absolutely. And if I can, just go back to a comment made by councillor Knox in terms of the value of the remuneration. Table one contained within the report is the current remuneration and the current remuneration bands set by the remuneration tribunal. That's not proposed new, that is current. Table two is simply using those bands that redistributing it across the council groupings which are used for council members. So it's not actually any different than the current remuneration bands that the remuneration tribunal has set today.
These bands are suggestions only, aren't they? Not law. They don't have to be adhered to.
Correct.
So if we've got council in one particular city, oh, we often, we want.
No, 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 no. These remuneration tribunal determinations must be adhered to. You cannot actually set a CEO's remuneration outside of those bands. So the remuneration tribunal is an independent body which has been established by the state government and has been via the local government reform and changes to the local government act. The remuneration tribunal now has oversight and determination power over the chief executive officer remuneration of a council. So the remuneration tribunal, as members will also be aware, sets the council member allowances and reviews that on a, on a four-yearly basis. And the remuneration tribunal also sets the remuneration of other state government employees. I think including, and Grant might have, have a comment on this, including magistrates, including chief executive officers of state government departments, et cetera, et cetera. So the, the remuneration tribunal is an independent body that is appointed by the state government for the purposes of setting the remuneration of various groups of different employees across government industry. And that now includes chief executive officers in local government.
Can I just jump in real quick? That message to the community, I think would be good.
Councillor Knox.
I'll be, this is my final one. Are there any senior managers, directors, whose salaries are linked to the CEO's salaries? Because in the past, they were, they were listed as a percentage of the CEO's salary. So we could be finding ourselves with a few more hubs as well, if that's the case.
No.
Thank you.
Councillor Inglis.
This is the Mel Hemingway. Rule, isn't it? I thought so. Yeah, that's what, I remember that from.
Yeah.
Any further questions to?
It's, sorry if I can through the mayor, my apologies, but it is, it is a very, it is a good thing that the remuneration of the chief executive officers is set at arm's length from the council members. And the reason that it, that it is, it is a good thing is that it can also then be industry-wide, so that you don't have outliers either paid a pittance, for the want of a better word, or at the other end of the spectrum, paid way too much in terms of, of the complexity and doing the role of a chief executive officer. So it achieves multiple benefits. One is that it is setting remuneration at the arm's length of the council, but the council still does have decision-making authority within that band so that the nuances of the particular region can actually be catered for. And secondly, it ensures consistency across the whole of local government in terms of chief executive officers and the roles that they undertake.
Thank you very much for that explanation. In that case, no further questions of director corporate, we have a recommendation. Councillor Simpson, you moving?
Correct.
Seconded councillor Inglis, I will put the motion, those in favour. Against Kerry. Thank you. While we wait for the CEO to join us, we will be moving on to item 14.2.5, adoption of the rating policy. Right, item 14.2.5, adoption of rating policy, CEO or manager of finance? Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. So, yeah, this report, obviously, we've had many discussions, a number of workshops, since consultation and worked through a number of different models. As we did in the last workshop, so the, the outcome of those models is presented in the report. Model six is the, or model seven is the hollowed one, the recommended one, and the recommendations of the report are aligned to that. I will make one note, small error maybe in the rating policy that needs updating before we adopt. I had listed other as having 100% differential, but that should have been 250% in line with the commercial, so much. Small adjustment to the, the second resolution, adopts the rating policy for the 2024, 25 financial year. Number two, yeah. Differential for other. Other, sorry. Being 250%. So that's in line with commercial. So those properties, others are a bit of a weird category that sits off, picks up the rest of the stuff, but they're basically commercial properties that just don't fit under the normal commercial. So apologies for that error from me. But yeah, so happy to take any questions on this, but hopefully it's all in line with what council expected and from our conversations so far.
Councillor Knox.
With that, I presume that's in place for the one year only and we would need to do another resolution for the second year and the third year?
So normally, the rating policy is adopted in line with the budget each year. We're doing it at a slightly different time this year because we've done the rating review purposely. We've tried to offset it from the actual budget process to separate it from the rate increase that we'll have to discuss with the community. The, the way we've written the rating policy is that those things there actually are fairly ongoing. There is, the way the rating policy is written is that the differentials can adjust slightly over time to account for different valuation changes between property types. And that would come back to council in the, in our rates adoption each year. But I have tried to write the rating policy so that it shouldn't have to change substantially from year to year. The capping up there is, applies for a three-year period. And then it would go away because that's the maximum amount of time we can undertake capping. But the resolutions are written in such a way, so the, yeah, it's the things we've changed since consultation, but the rating policy itself has all the information in it on what we've decided. So for instance, the cap being 18% in year one and then 12% in year two and three, that's reflected in the, in the rating policy. These resolutions are really about the things we've changed since we went out for consultation.
Any further questions? In that case, we have a recommendation. One, A, B, C, D and two. Would somebody care to move the recommendation? Move councillor Inglis, seconded councillor Simpson. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against Kerry. Thank you. Item 14.3, city growth ordinary reports, 14.3.1, proposed music festival in Maritime Museum Gardens. Who would you wish to take questions?
Yeah, Gail will come up to the table if they have any questions. So happy to have questions come through from councillors.
Councillor Inglis.
So music, I'm going to hear him going.
Yes, something modern. Something probably that your young, your young, well, your young people would be interested in. So I think we wanted to bring this to the chamber just to keep you informed in what's happening in the area. And with our events and permitting processes upping the ante, that we've got some, you know, we address as a, there's a, there's a market for this opportunity, but that we take it very seriously around how we look at all the implications around running a festival in that area.
Any further questions? Deputy mayor Pond.
Not so much a question, just a comment. I think this is fantastic. It's definitely an air and age group that we do not cater for a lot. So I think it's very much filling a gap and I'm all for it and I'd love to pass it.
Councillor Knox.
I'm all for it as well. My only concerns are that the, how many do they expect to get attending? Because the grounds of the Maritime Museum aren't huge.
And we've capped, we've capped the attendance at 500. And when we've done, done some very serious calculations around how the setup would look. And we've got areas that would be all broken up into different themes, food trucks in one area, bars in other area, main stage in another area. So it's a little bit of a, I suppose, a journey. So, yeah, so we just, we formed a small committee to look at the risk and issues around hosting a festival in that area. So we can, I think, confirm for ourselves that we, it's a great idea and that we support it. You know, we've asked for some additional information, but absolutely, as councillor Pond said, an area of our community that 18 to 30-year-old that we are lacking in entertainment for.
Councillor border.
Yes, age group and location, I think is fantastic. So all for it. The question I have is, what is the main, main concern that you may have? That's my first question. And the second question slash observation would be transport to and from there when there's alcohol involved in that demographic and it's probably a bit too far to walk back home. So just how that might be handled?
Yep, we learnt a lot in that area from our projections on the side of the ship around traffic management. So one of the concerns we had around was the movement of traffic from that area. So we've asked the promoter to give us a traffic management plan, which would involve traffic and transport options for people attending the festival. We've been quite serious around people, you know, under the influence of alcohol with the main road there, you know, heavy truck movement. So, so, yeah, so we've put some questions back to the promoter and we're just waiting on those answers.
And also with that location, it's, it's nice and far away for people that want to sleep that night as well. So that's a good thing.
Yes. You know, we have some other, if it doesn't work in that area, we do have some other suggestions. And we're just waiting on, on some final information back. But yeah, very exciting to bring something different to the community.
Any further questions? My turn. I had a discussion earlier with this CEO. Not so much a question, but just comments, seeing this won't come back to council. I would hope, and I believe this needs to be cost neutral, including any wages that may be required on the day, the day before or the day after. And if there are additional requirements like toilets, lighting, generators, who pays for that? Hopefully, the promoter. He have already answered expected numbers. Now, touchy one possibly. Should there be an upfront bond to cover any potential damages? I raised that from the, if you look at the worst case scenario, the promoter goes busts, there's damages, can't afford it. That were just my comments as to what I think we need to address, seeing this doesn't come back to council. Certainly open about the need for something like that, but to make sure that it is cost neutral, seeing it's a private function, it's not as if it's one of our freebies. So they, they're certainly just my comments. Thank you.
And yes, Mayor Stone, that's why we wanted to bring this to the attention of the elected members. And we know everyone, our sensitivity around the area and what that means to us. So we've absolutely factored in all of those, all of those concerns that you have. There will be a bond pay, there'll be payment upfront for the permitting fees. There will be no staff involvement on the day, there'll be significant security, there'll be areas fenced off. So we've taken it very seriously. There's also a concern that we need to be operational the next day by ten AM to open up the Maritime Museum and the ship for visitors. So that's all being taken and accounted for.
Thank you. Any further questions? Yeah, councillor Knox.
Moving the recommendation.
Councillor Border.
Seconding.
Seconding. We have a mover and a second, or I'll put the motion those in favour, against Kerry. Thank you. Item fourteen point four, city infrastructure ordinary reports. Neil, I knew that. Item fifteen, information decision reports, fifteen point one, council members, fifteen point one point one, the mayor's list of engagements. I just wanted to make a couple of, I just, sorry about that. Additional comments, if I may. I would certainly encourage, oh, excuse me. If I go down there, you know we've got problems. I'd certainly encourage the community to get behind the launch of the enterprise women's, enterprising women's, while a businesswoman of the year award. We've certainly got some fantastic female leaders, service providers and the likes. So I would hope that we can do our bit as well in encouraging the community to respond to that. Would be a fantastic award, and there have been some tremendous winners over the years. The TAFE SA Upper Spencer Gulf Class of Twenty Three graduation ceremony. That is the first time they've held a ceremony like that. I think it was an outstanding success and a good way to congratulate those that have reached the class of twenty three. I am hopeful that the way all the TAFE hierarchy who came up from Adelaide for it were wrapped in it and that it will become a permanent thing. It really lifts this idea of TAFE not being quite up with unis and that. You don't have to go to university to succeed. So I congratulate them and look forward to that continuing. And the Wyla Photographic Group, their peninsula camera club, they had their annual event, it was hosted in Wyla. We had photographers and, and visitors from Port Lincoln over to Kimber, West Coast, an incredible range of photography. And the beauty was, it linked in with the focus of Wyla at the moment, our future ahead. And also, we have that relationship with our photographic club because they do a lot of the photography for, photography for Wyla. So it's a win for us in getting good photos, and it's a win for them, you know, also making a little bit of money. So I congratulate them on a fantastic display that they were able to hold at Breeze Bistro. Yeah, really, really good. I would not want, have wanted to be one of the judges. And it turns out judging this these days, I share this with you, IT has, has got some positives. They used to have to just bundle them all up very carefully, send them to one judge, then to another, and then to a third. It's all, I think, all judges, or at least two to three, were international, and they're all done over the net. And it's made it so much easier and different. They all have huge screens, and they go through and work out who's who. So they had quite a range of winners, but I congratulate the photographic group here in Wyla for hosting a very successful event. That's all from me, folks. Unless you've got any questions, if not, I'll keep moving quickly. Would somebody care to move councillor Simpson, deputy mayor Pond seconded, to receive and note the mayor's report? I'll put the motion those in favour, against Kerry. Item fifteen point one point two, the Air Peninsula Local Government Association, notice of motion from district council of Elliston. You will recall, if you've read the report, we did receive it, we deferred it, pending more information from the workshop. Having attended that with the CEO, I took it upon myself to offer to do the report. And you have it there. I'm more than happy to answer any questions as to why I have recommended it that way. Councillor, everyone's got their lights on. Councillor Simpson.
I'm proposing.
Sorry?
I'm proposing.
Well, all right, well, do any, all right, we have a, have a mover. I didn't see which one came up first, deputy mayor Pond.
I'd just like to say, I absolutely stand by this recommendation. I was online and I watched the presentation, and it's all about education. It really is, everything that was presented by the scientists and the specialists. It's their territory, we've got to learn to live in their world. I don't think we should be going out killing sharks every time there's an accident. And I think one of the stats that we heard is people are more likely to be killed by a falling tree than a shark attack. So, and I think this is a very well written report, Mayor. Good job.
Councillor Campbell.
I, I just wanted to say I support this position as well. I did some of my own research online as well, and, and that showed that even with culling white sharks, the actual statistics of accidents or shark events weren't reduced, just the number of sharks. So we support this, although it's a sensitive, it's a sensitive topic and it's a hard topic. So I thank you for your report, Mayor.
Thank you. Just, oh, councillor Border before I.
Well, while we're all in the very good report, I think it was a well written report as well. And seeing the democracy in action, when the, the motion first came through, the emotion behind it, and then the, the gathering of the information and how that was presented. It was, it's heartening to see as, you know, still not even eighteen months in council. So it was really nice to see how that process works. And I, I just like the sensitivity that you've put in the report as well because it is a very emotive topic, and if someone is directly affected by it, maybe it's hard for them to see any other side of it. But yes, well written.
Thank you, councillors. Just explaining why I've come up with that recommendation. It concerns me greatly that if this motion, these motions get up, it will divide the EPLGA. With the greatest respect to those behind the motion, I have viewed it as opinion, it is not, there is not sufficient evidence, as well as, people government have a totally different view on how you deal with white sharks. As I've said in that report, I'm going to be presenting and arguing that it goes against the EPLGA charter. It is not looking after all regions at the same time. It will create division, it will create controversy. I think there are other recommendations, sweeter recommendations they could be putting up to try to achieve the same results. Yes, a very emotional issue, and it could be said, what would we know? Upper Spencer Gulf, we don't have that issue. A lot of the arguments that were presented and a lot of the canvassing leading up to the meeting was really based on emotion. And I guess I've tried to take the emotion out, looking at the future of the regional association and what the regional association should be doing business on. And I don't think that's it. I still don't know how it will ultimately go because there wasn't indication that some councils were already supporting it, and that was without the workshop. So we will see what happens at the May election, but I thank you for your support. We have a motion on the books, councillor Inglis.
I just want to make one comment. I mean, I know where we sit, that I deal with the Elliston council through my real job, and, and there's a lot of grief and a lot of thanks in that community about what's happened in the last twelve months. I mean, we can sit back here and judge until you've been and seen how that community is suffering and struggling with this, you can understand why they want to do what they want to do. There's a lot of emotion there, and I wouldn't roll down the main street of Elliston till I'm taking a boat this way because you might end up off Blackfells into the water for, without a shark to chomp on. So, because, you know, that being, you know, two school teachers have been horrendously affected. So it's a very sensitive situation. It can't be interesting to see how it flies, but I've said I deal with these guys a lot, and they are in a world to hurt some of them.
I realize that, yes. Councillor Knox.
I'm seconding the resolution.
Oh, right, so we, councillor Campbell, will you go and ask a question or? Well, I have a motion from councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Knox. I'll put that motion those in favour, against Kerry. Thank you. Item fifteen point two, fifteen point two point one, corporate services monthly information report. We have an exceptionally detailed information report.
It's reporting a bit of a backlog, Mayor.
Councillor, it jumped down, I think councillor Border was there, and then councillor Knox stuck his nose in, councillor Border.
Yes, councillor Knox has got the magic touch on his mic tonight. So the events, am I on the right spot here? So the youth week, youth week events, this is all the big reports. I've just lost track of my agenda. This is where we're talking about all the different departments put together the reports, some quarterly. Yeah, cool, thank you. So the, when, where it came to the events part, the youth week funding, such an important piece as Wyla transforms, I think we really have an opportunity to help the youth grow with the city, and it's, it's programs like the Balanced Choice Program that I just wanted to comment and just say, I think that is absolutely well and truly where we need to be and a, and a huge opportunity. So that was my first comment. I did have a question in, for the media team really, but in regards to the summaries that they've put forward about engagement on social media. Fantastic, I love the comprehensive nature of it, which is wonderful to see that we have that feedback. There was mention of negative comments being categorized. Now, I'm not judging up or down or, or good or bad, but I'm just wondering by what mechanism are comments categorized at negative, as negative, positive or neutral? If, if someone knows the answer to that question, just how they are actually categorized? If that's an automated thing that an algorithm decides, or whether someone's actually gone through and said, no, no, I'm going to allocate these myself?
Yep, through the mayor, Sean Kelly here, Peter. Yeah, we do have monitoring software, it's called Meltwater. So that automatically will decide if something is positive, negative, neutral or, or not rated. So it's purely an automated system. We can go through and manually tweak those if we think it's not accurate. But yeah, it is an automated, based on, you know, algorithms and lots of use across the globe.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Councillor Knox.
Great reporting. I'm really, really pleased to be getting this level of reporting coming to us. But I would like to see a bit more information in a couple of areas so that we as a council can identify trends. And one of those I'm going to mention is the library because there's no detail in there, the number of memberships, what the changes in membership are, what, what, what items are being borrowed, what are the trends of borrowing those items? Is it DVDs going up and down, a CD's going up and down, a book's going up and down or whatever? And I think those are critical things for us. We can look at it then and say, oh, what's, what's happening at the library? Why aren't we getting more members, for example? That's the sort of thing I'd like to see in there.
Thank you, councillor. In fact, I had a discussion earlier with the CEO over that very matter, although I was on a different line of thought to you. But yes, I would like to see more numbers. On the other hand, I congratulate the environmental health report that has numbers throughout it for us to fully understand. So certainly, that was an excellent report, but yes, a little bit more in numbers. Yes, councillor Border.
One thing I did want to mention and just point out and really just commend, I think it was the garage sale, that Wyla was listed fifth nationally. That's all, forgive my obviousness, but that's a nationwide poll, and Wyla was number five. I just think that was, that's pretty amazing to see that.
We have a lot of garages. Deputy Mayor Pond.
Probably says every three months, but really appreciate these reports and the information that we're getting, and it shows how hard our staff are working for the community. So I'd just like to pat everyone on the back. I did see the huge list of authors for this report. So everyone's had a go at putting in some information, and I'd like to move it.
Thank you, deputy mayor Pond. Councillor Border, seconded?
Well, seconded.
And I'd certainly support your comments about the efforts that are going into it. Thank you. I'll put the motion those in favour, against Kerry. Item sixteen, notice of motion, nil. Seventeen, questions on notice, nil. Item eighteen, questions without notice. Councillor Board, sorry, councillor Inglis first.
I've just got, I was checking councillor Simpson here. See, we've had so many new staff start in this place. You walk around this joint, you wouldn't know a lot of people are. You know, why couldn't we have an evening where the member, the elected members and all the new managers and staff working here come and get introduced to people, so you know who's in the zoo? But Phil asked me who Les was before, and then there was clear who he was. And as people wandered in and out, so I just think it'd be a good idea that there was a, doesn't have to be anything official, just catch up with all the new people coming to work and find out exactly what they're doing for us and how it works. Just a thought.
Thank you, councillor. I lost track, or councillor Knox.
I've got one question. We fenced off an area of the groin at the foreshore, leading out to the jetty, and it's been fenced off for quite some time. I keep getting people saying to me, why aren't we getting on fixing it?
And I'll take the, that one on notice in terms of details. What I am aware is that the, the works, the, the necessary resources have been ordered for the works, and we've been waiting for those to come in. So perhaps it's more from a communication and management of expectations in terms of timeframes that we could potentially get out there. But I'll take that one on notice in terms of the exact details as to the timeframes and get back to you.
My understanding is that development approval's been granted very recently?
Give me pardon.
My understanding is that we got development approval very recently.
Yep.
And if I know anything, if it's any use, my latest understanding was that we had to prove that the quality of the rock that was going to go in there met all the specifications, and that was holding things up.
Correct.
Thank you. Councillor Simpson. Oh, you jumped, oh, you jumped ahead.
I, I used to have the magic one, now I've got the one.
You're on the bottom of my list. Councillor Border.
That's probably why.
Thanks, Phil. That's a drive one. Just, I didn't have this question initially, but councillor Knox raises that great point, and this is where we discussed a QR code system or something on temporary signage that's sometimes not so temporary, where the community can ask the question, but where they can go up with their phone and they can scan it. It just has a simple sign that can be moved around with an evergreen, always linked QR code that says this won't be here long, or work in progress, scan here for more details. And I, just so that we can continue that messaging in, almost in real time. But it gives the community that insight into what is happening with the links to a Facebook post that we've made. But it gives the community that insight into what is happening, whether it links to a Facebook post that we've made or a, a part of our webpage, which I'm, I'm sure Sean might be able to create. He's a wizard. And then three other quick questions. Businesswoman of the year, enterprising women, business of the month, Wyla Business and Tourism. And Australia Day Awards, that's through the council. So there's three methods there, just off the top of my head, of where the community is asked to vote. And I think the idea of businesswoman of the year, business of the month and the Australia Day Awards are absolutely wonderful. It's an effort for each of those groups to promote that. Is there a way that we can collaborate together and put to the community without overwhelming? And, and the strategy behind this would be important, of course. But to, to group those things together, to find a synergy and, and, and efficiency in attracting people, raising awareness for all of the valuable causes that they are and essentially having a, a larger base of people that are voting, which makes the whole process more meaningful. So that was one point of how we can do that. That's one question. My next question is in regards to a conversation I was having with a community member just today about the men's shed, that he would like to see the Wyla quilters and the come and do needlework. Yep, that there might be potential to, I use the word amalgamate. He says, don't amalgamate, but if there was a building big enough that they'd be happy to share. And so I just thought that I'd mention that as well, that that may be something to put together, but if it didn't work, maybe it wouldn't work. I'm seeing some frowny faces. But that was another idea, the men's shed might be happy to have a bigger space and they would be happy to share. So that was the second point. And the third one and the final one, councillor Simpson, is Anderson Raceway. Actually, I think that might be a one I'll ask another time. So I'm just going to leave it at that.
Councillor Simpson?
My, it slipped off my calendar, but how are we going to Norton Park doors?
Can I take that one unnoticed, councillor Simpson? And I'll get back to you tomorrow. It's been a long haul in trying to get those doors for the toilets. And I will get another update for you.
Councillor Campbell?
If I may just make a comment on what councillor Boarder had to say about the men's shed. It's just a point, knowing some people that are involved with the quilting and with the men's shed. They're all retired people and they, that's their escape from each other. And the men's shed is also mental health based. It's not just carpentry based. So that they may not be able to have that space to open up if there's vibes or there's other people in the area. That's just my thoughts on it and what I know of, of it. So that might be something to consider when you're speaking to those people.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Boarder?
I just, just add a little bit more around that. So he, he was suggesting it and it was just to have a bigger space. So it wasn't necessarily that they're run concurrently at the same time, but yeah, I take on board absolutely what you're saying there and I, I wasn't aware of that. So I'll note that for future reference as well.
Yeah. Thank you, councillor. I am aware the men's shed want a bigger site. Yeah, that is the main point. Yes. Thank you. Item nineteen, motions without notice? Item, right, we now get to item twenty, consideration of confidential items. I suggest we have a break. Would somebody care to move a fifteen minute break? Councillor Knox, seconded councillor Boarder, those in favour, against, carry. We will resume at five, ten, fifteen, thirteen minutes past seven. Right, folks, would somebody care to move that we go back into open council at this stage? Move councillor Knox, seconded councillor Campbell. I'll put the motion those in favour, against, carry. Thank you. Would somebody care to move that we go into confidential? Move councillor Boarder, seconded deputy mayor Pond. I'll put the motion those in favour, against, carry. We're back in open council. CEO? Right, okay. In that case, we've all business attended too. By the time at twenty six minutes past seven, I'll declare the meeting closed and thank you for your attendance and all your input for the evening.